The City of Montessorino Council Meeting for February 4th is now in session. Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lahey.
Present.
Councilmember LaBouvet.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Pro tempere Luthold.
Present.
And Mayor Lawler.
Present.
Any changes to the orders of the day, Mr. Leonardis?
No.
All right, moving on to oral communications. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Yes, council recognizes Brian Mekachuk.
Hi, Brian Mekachuk, 17509 Via Sereno. I just wanted to say that I was worried when our building official left, but I was really worried that the attorney, Ollie, to do some work, and I think he's going to work out well for defense, which I just want to say a positive thing.
Great, thank you.
Good to hear that.
Are there any -- there's no written communications. Moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any council members wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar? I have a motion by Mayor Pro tempere Luthold, a second by Councilmember LaBouvet. She should be able to vote.
Her voting's not coming up.
I'm trying to just completely get out of it.
Maybe make sure she's on the right Wi-Fi. That's the City Hall official use, 5.0.
Oh, there it goes.
Are we ready to vote?
I have three votes in. Okay, all votes are in. And the consent calendar passes 5-0, thank you. All right, moving on. Public hearings, item number six, 18240 Dave's Avenue, request for a special use permit, site development permit, tree removal permit, and a variance. Ms. Hamilton, is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Lawler, and council members. Let me first point out, in the --
I just had to make a comment. In the interest of disclosure, I have talked to the objecting party here. I visited the site and took a look at it, so I wanted to disclose that, put that on the record.
Okay. I was going to have everyone do that after the staff report, but since we're doing it, anyone else?
Yes, I also visited the objecting party's property and looked at the site.
I also have visited the objecting party as well, spoken with the applicant.
Same here.
Okay, moving forward.
Again, let me just point out one error in the staff report. In the heading, I say that it's an existing 2,075 square foot historic adobe home. It's actually 2,705. I transposed the zero and the seven. So what you have in front of you is a grouping of applications, really, for a project which involves an existing historic structure here in the City of Montessorino. It was included on the historic inventory, and council approved a Mills Act contract for this historic adobe, which paved the way for the property owner to begin extensive renovations to the home, to bring it up to a more pristine condition, given its historic status. The proposal before you is an addition to this existing historic home to the rear or to the southern end of it. Because it is an addition to historic structure, it does require a special use permit. There are other elements that also require a site development permit, more specifically the detached accessory structure, as well as a tree removal permit for the two trees, and then most prominent, a variance, given the location and encroachment of the proposed addition into that side interior setback. If you've been able to look at the plans and kind of read through the staff report, the structure was built in and around 1938. It's of adobe construction, and so it has an integrity relative to that construction that causes the applicant to propose an addition such that he doesn't impact that structural integrity of the adobe construction. Additionally, there was a previous addition approved back in '63 over one of the wings of the home. So kind of in concert with the Secretary of Interior standards for the preservation of historic structures, the applicant has been working with a preservation architect to propose this addition such that it meets those guiding standards. And that's why you'll see that it's constructed to the rear or rear or side, whatever you want to call it, of the historic structure, as well as utilizing the existing finished materials of that later addition, so that it still separates itself from the primary historic architecture. The home, as I said, was built in 1938, so not really knowing what standards were in place at the time, it was in the county of Santa Clara's jurisdiction. You know, clearly it was placed at a point on that lot that probably appeared to be the most logical place to construct a home. It was at the top of the hill on a flat, the flatter area of that site. So as time went on and it was incorporated into the city, the applicable regulations caused that portion of the home where they wanted to do that second story addition to be non-conforming. So at that time, it was granted a variance to allow that second story addition to mimic the footprint of the primary structure, more than likely, so that it could utilize the existing walls for foundation purposes. So that variance that was approved back in '63 was to allow for it to go down to 11 feet instead of the 30-foot front. At the time, it did meet the 20-foot side setback, or was going to, because there was a lot line adjustment going on at the same time. If you had the opportunity to maybe see some of the information that the applicant submitted and will be later presenting, the home was in extreme disrepair. It needed a lot of structural reinforcing. The finish of the adobe was, had to be stripped because it was painted with a paint that didn't let the bricks breathe, and you need to let it breathe. So a lot of work has gone in to this point, to bring that community asset, really, up to a point where, I don't know, I think this community can be proud to say that they've got a real adobe. The work continues, so if you went and visited the site, you will still see some other work going on. There's a lot of landscaping going on and whatnot. As far as the proposed addition, as I pointed out in the staff report, for the SUP portion of it, in staff's analysis, again, placing the addition to that rear portion or that side portion and creating a continuation of that previous addition is exactly what the Secretary of Interior standards would tell you to do, so that you're not taking away from the historic integrity or degrading its architectural significance. As far as the other, you know, the site development and the tree removal for the detached accessory structure and those, the two oak trees, the, again, the placement of that accessory structure is, meets the standards. It allows, you know, a garage to be a little closer to the home, but it still keeps a distance from the historic structure so that it doesn't really block the view of it and/or take away from that, the significance of the structure. There are two trees proposed to be removed, one right adjacent to where that detached structure is proposed, and then one in that southeastern corner where a new gas meter is going to be going, and PG&E has requested that the applicant remove that tree. The new gas line was put in per permit and, again, is, was being done to, I think, upgrade the previous utility layout on the site and to accommodate also future or stuff that is going on now relative to the pool upgrade and whatnot. As to the variance, if you've been out to the site, obviously, you understand the topography of the site. There is a slope of 23.9% over the 44,000 square foot lot, and that, when you run it through what we term a slope density formula, it causes the effective zoning standards to be those of the R-120. So if there are any questions about that, that's why, although it's zoned R-144, the effective standards are for the R-120 district. So you get the 15 and the 20. The, you know, staff's analysis of the findings necessary for the variance, you know, are that there's, the topography of the site really only offers a limited area for development, and the fact that there's existing development in the form of a historic structure on that portion, that creates even more limited opportunity to develop on the site. The historic structure itself, again, it's contained within the adobe walls. There are some limiting factors to the floor area within that structure. The kitchen is very tiny. It's, you know, you're going to run into each other, so the applicant wanting to, again, expand on the living space but still retain the integrity, not just the exterior integrity, but the interior integrity of this structure, too. There's a lot of interior work to this structure that adds to, I think, the overall integrity of its historic architecture and character. So in doing that, he's kind of limited in his opportunities to expand, and that really is to the southern part of that existing structure, which, again, is contained between that existing side property line and the exterior wall. To create any size of an area, he's, he is requesting to encroach into that ground floor 15-foot setback, and then the upper floor 20 side setback. If you've been able to look at the plans, the back pages, I think, are a good illustration of where, even with the existing structure, or it had been existing, there were some existing non-conforming additions or trellises, balconies, or whatnot, that have already been removed and will further be removed with the project if supported. So I think site 1.0, the sheets, Site 1.0, Site 2.0, 3.0, and 4.0 really give a good illustration as to the existing or previously existing construction, which has since been removed, and then the proposed additions. In the staff report, again, you know, there is some interest to see whether or not, you know, this is going to have an impact on surrounding properties. In staff's review of it, again, the topography of this area, there's a real hill going down to that southern direction of Dave's. You know, once it turns and goes south towards Highway 9, that hill really drops down. So the homes that are on that Dave's Avenue side are at a much lower elevation than the subject home, and so in, you know, doing any sort of addition, whether it's within the setbacks or encroachment into it, you know, any line of sight is really going to go out over the homes and over the roof line, as well as, you know, you've seen the vegetation out there and new vegetation that's being planted to create some buffer between the proposed project and adjacent property. The, um, what else was I looking at? On page four of the staff report, I tried to illustrate kind of the, you know, distance between existing structures, as well as, you know, talk about the difference in elevation. And, you know, yes, this is requesting an encroachment into a setback. Staff's opinion is that the special circumstances in that the topography of the site and the existing placement of the historic structure really kind of limit the development opportunities on the site. So those special circumstances are, those findings for those special circumstances can be made. That being said, again, I think with the project as proposed, the landscape screening, you know, even though there is a difference in elevation, the applicant has proposed these additional elements to kind of counter any of that, as well as there have been modifications to the original proposal to pull it, the addition, in a little more, create some higher level windows so that there won't be, you know, looking out to that southern side, and then also creating some, I think it's in a bathroom window or some obscured window. So there have been some alterations to the original proposal in response to some concerns that have been voiced by the neighbor, by the applicant. And if you were able to go out to the site, you know, he's already begun some plantings regardless of the outcome, to create a screening between the two properties. I did, this did go to site and architecture. They put forth a recommendation that they felt they were able to make the findings to support the variance at the ground floor, but not the upper floor. Staff's analysis supports the findings regardless of what floor. If I could make them for the first floor, I can make them for the second floor. The circumstances are the same. That's why you'll see the two different recommendations. I think that's it. I'm available for any questions.
Do any council members have any questions? Would you like to start?
I just have one, I have one question. On the back, on the back pages, I believe it's page Site 3. Well, it can be between Site 2 and Site 3. So I was just a little confused by the, your statement about how the previous structure was conforming, and, but in Site 3, it looks like the, so is it correct that the second story addition, the existing second story addition, was already encroaching on the 20-foot setback?
Well, what I can say is when it was approved in '63, it was approved as a conforming. I can't speak to how it came to be. I mean, my assumption is this is based on a survey. So, I mean, and I do have the approving plans, not building plans, it's just the variance with the plans that went along with it, and it showed 20. So it's kind of this anomaly. I don't, I can't speak to how it currently doesn't meet.
Is it not, is there an overhang? Because in Site 2, it looks like there's a dotted line here. I'm not sure what that dotted line is. Is that the, is that supposed to be a dotted line of the second story? Where that looks like it's almost, where it's almost touching?
Existing second floor overhangs the first floor. That's the dotted line.
Okay, but then, but then on Site 3, it looks like it's significantly encroaching past the 20-foot setback line.
Well, on Site 2, that's a 15-foot setback line, and on Site 3 is a 20-foot setback line. So the setback, so the dotted lines are at different points. So, yeah, that's, that's right.
And was the requirement back in the '60s, was it only 15 feet, or was it also 20 feet?
For the second floor, it was 20 feet, yes.
Okay, all right.
So.
So that's grandfathered in, that's, I understand that.
Again.
I'm just trying to understand where, what's the starting point.
What was approved through the variance and what was on the plans was the 20-foot, and they, actually, the original structure was a little over two feet from the property line. But there was a lot line adjustment done to make it 20. So the original structure was actually built maybe two and a half feet from that property line, that corner.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I have a question. You mentioned that PG&E requested to remove the trees.
Just the one in the southeastern corner, to accommodate a new gas meter.
Can they, can they also remove the gas heater instead of removing the tree? Can we do that?
You know, I, I'll leave it up to the applicant to explain why the gas, PG&E wants to locate the gas meter where it does. You know, sometimes it's a straight shot, so I don't know. When the, yeah, I think when the applicant comes up later, you can address that question to him, because he's been doing gas line relocations and stuff. So it's a request of PG&E, and he's probably more versed in why they're requesting it to be there. So.
Councilmember Lahey, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious. This was a R-144, but because of the slope, it's now an R-120.
It's still R-144, but it's subject to the R-120 standards. And I know that sounds technical, but it is still zoned R-144. Per the slope density requirement, because it has an average slope of 10% or greater, it now causes the effective development standards to be that of the R-120.
Yeah, so that's what, that was going to be my question. What percentage of the slope causes the R-144 to become an R-120? Because it affects the setbacks, right?
You know, I'd have to run that slope with, or that lot area with different slopes and show you at what point, at what average slope it trips it, and I, I don't know.
There's a set formula.
It's a set formula.
At a certain percentage.
Yeah.
And I was looking at the onsite, I guess, and I looked at something that said for R-144, if it's been 1 to .16, so I thought maybe 16% was the slope that cuts, brings it into a 120.
I don't know. I mean, I'd have to, usually what I do with people is we run different scenarios. We'll put in 10%. The lot, if they have a certain lot size, we'll keep that constant, and I'll run 10%, or I'll run 12%, or I'll run 13%. And at what percent does it kick them out of that district into different district standards? You really, it's not the same with every lot.
So what was?
Because it's the two variables.
So what was the percentage on this one to kick it to a R-120?
I don't know. I didn't run the various scenarios. I just, because it is what it is, it's 23.9. You can't change that.
I understand.
So that and the lot area is what's going to tell me whether or not it's subject to another standard. So I don't, because I can't say, well, if you change the slope, or if you change the lot area, you can't. Those are, those are two constants.
And then there was a question that, this was the only place to build. The garage is being moved. Was it possible to just extend it on that side, to where the new garage is being put?
Well, again, you know, there's already been an addition to one side of the structure. To then add on to the other is starting to engulf the larger historic structure. I think, you know, maybe the architect can talk a little more to how you would, you know, want to minimize, you know, adding on all around a historic structure, because, you know, it would really begin to impact the integrity, the larger integrity of not only the architecture but the historic.
Just one more.
No, go ahead, go ahead, just in the interest of making sure everyone gets questions.
And the lot is also, and this is on the slope, but there's almost a half an acre complete flat land on the other side that could also be used for building. Is that something you would consider or not in making your recommendations?
No, because that would be, you know, I'm looking at an addition to an existing structure. If he wants to add accessory structures, he can put them elsewhere, but he wants to expand the living area of an existing structure.
I understand.
So if he wanted to do it in a cabana or an accessory dwelling unit, there's probably other areas to do that. That's not what he's asking to do. He's asking to expand on the existing living area of the home where there's some limitations inside.
Mayor Pro tempere Luthold?
Thank you. Just to be clear, so the existing structure there is 2705 square feet? Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Not 2. Okay. And then the proposed addition is 1723, for a total of 4428. Is that right? I just did the math. Close enough.
Yeah, and that's on, if you, on one of these sheets. Isn't it on one of these sheets? Yeah, it's here.
I thought so.
It is.
I forgot what it is.
I know, it's here. Because we have the slope. That's got the slope. Yeah. I just saw it today. I'll find it, it's in here. I'll find it, it's in here. So the existing is, the total is 75. Of the house itself is about 4,400 square feet. It's got some covered porches, which adds about another 260 square feet. So, and then the detached garage is separate.
And then, the existing structure, the 2705, is the livable square footage of the existing structure?
It's three.
The walls are very thick.
Yes.
Okay, but it's of the, the living space.
Yeah.
Okay.
The existing square footage.
Okay. And then, I don't know if, Jeanne, if you have this, or if the applicant maybe knows, what was the square footage without the addition, just the adobe structure?
1991.
Okay.
Yeah. The second floor addition is 692 square feet, but the ground floor is 1991.
Okay, those were my questions. Thank you.
Right, I have a quick question for you regarding the variance and requirements for the variance. Site and Architecture is okay with the variance request for the first floor, and what, what exactly were the requirements that were met? And why weren't those requirements met for the second story?
Again, the special circumstances of the topography, the steepness of the lot, the, the physical location of the existing historic structure, and again, if you've been out to see the site, the, I'll call it the west side, which is the, you know, drops down, there's a, there's a exterior covered porch, and then there's a big drop down. So you, you see the house, but the back of it, it drops down a hill. So that, that offers some greater limitations to adding on to it as opposed to the south side, which is a little more level.
Okay. And then the second story didn't meet those requirements because it's a second story?
In staff's opinion, in staff's opinion, the circumstances are the circumstances regardless of first or second floor.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just one follow-up question. If this had not been an adobe that was being added on to, would your recommendation be different as far as allowing the variance?
Again, I think the historic structure is one of those circumstances that is, is special, unique to this property, that because of it, you know, if he was going to have to add on to it and add over that structure, that has the potential to impact the structural integrity of it and the whole significance of this structure. If you look at it, there's not a whole lot of interior, interior walls. It's, it's, I mean, they can speak more to the structural position of the, the home itself and what it would take to put a second story over, more over the structure. There's, there's a vaulted ceiling, and to preserve a lot of that, you really can't add on to it without destroying it.
To supplement that answer by the city planning director, really, the legal standard for granting them a variance is that you're only allowed to grant one where the strict application of the city zoning ordinances would, you know, basically deprive that property owner of the same kinds of privileges for development that are enjoyed by other property owners under that same zoning class because of special circumstances applicable to the property. So really, what the council would have to find in order to grant a variance is that there are special circumstances applicable to the property that would cause that sort of hardship to the property owner. And those circumstances are things like the size, shape, topography of the property, the location, the surroundings, and certainly one of the things the city council can consider is the existence of that historic structure where it is located.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we will now open it to public comment, or do we have a, yes, we have, actually, we have the applicant, the applicant presentation. That's what we have.
Good evening. Thank you, Mary, council, for allowing us time to speak about this project. I am Craig Mindweiser of Mindweiser and Associates, the architectural firm in the country. And it would be helpful if you could find the last five sheets in your packet, because I want to take your cue very quickly to some of, hopefully answer some of the questions presented here tonight and also from Site and Architecture. So basically, there have been a finding previously that this house is not only historic, it is so historic that it could actually be eligible for the National Register of Historic Properties, which is the premier listing of historic properties of the whole country.
Oh, no.
As such, we, as presidential architects, are required to follow this booklet here, which is full of guidelines and standards promoted by the Secretary of Materials Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. So that says, in a nutshell, that we should do our best to save all the character-defining features and the fabric, obviously, the fabric of this structure. It also says that we should be concerned about its mass as well as where it's located because we can't change that. That's part of why we were elected as to where we could build. But I wanted to address the concerns that the special committee had with regard to the second floor. So if you take a look at Site 1.0, you'll see some yellow and blue spots that are outdoor that were very actively used on the family. There's also a yellow and blue square right tucked up into the back corner of the house, which is the laundry bathroom. It's a substandard addition here of the building. So I wanted to point out that if you go to Site Two, on this page, all that pink-colored area that is encroaching into the setback, that only goes in six inches more than, sorry, there's only six inches more or closer to the property line than the previous one was when you count the patio and trellis area. And the reason I'm counting that tonight is because that was a very actively used area on the family. There was a door right outside the laundry room that led to that. Taking all of that away, we are making the windows on that property line side, that whole side yard now becomes only, like, reduced. Also, on Site Two, you'll notice that is the dining deck balcony, which would move further away from the property line in response to some of the concerns across the board before. Okay, I got a next. So we were talking earlier about the second floor addition. So if you go to Site Three, you'll see the big gray box is the second floor addition that exists now. And you'll notice that our vertical setback line bisets right through the overhang and targeted addition. Now, and maybe inches off, I don't know. We had surveyed the other bedroom, and knowing by that was just physical measure, 26 inches off. But my point is, if you compare the area to the left of that vertical line, that's about a quarter of that gray box. If you then go on to the next sheet, Site Four, the box is color black and the addition is gray, and you'll see that the addition is about a third into the setback. So it's not that much more in terms of square feet. And there is a little balcony door that we can go over also. Point I wanted to really point out why, because I think I didn't do a good job with that with our country review, why we can't go any further to the right, which is north. In the interior, you'll see in your packets some pictures of, that has a beautiful, open truss ceiling. As this historic home is so highly rated, we have to be concerned about preserving the interior. So that room, in its entirety, is being preserved. That said, that's where we stopped the addition. So we could move it further north and still have the same square footage and be out of the setback lines, where we're constrained, we can't do that. Also very thick, so the rooms are rather tiny. Bedrooms on the north. So putting the garage on that end was really our only choice. We didn't want to add on the kitchen and the master suite on that end because it would be punctual. So we put the kitchen, the much-used portion, on the downstairs side, and near those portions that are much more active. Of that is the master suite. So that means the use of the owners for the owner to modify and use. And furthermore, by placing the addition where we did, it preserves everything about the look of the outside of the historic structure. It doesn't come over. Can I then tell a little bit further about what he's doing?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Peter Ball, I'm the owner of 82240, Dave Draven. I've been a resident since 2016, and I'm the CEO for a hedge company, I understand what I can. I purchased the property in November of 2016, and the property, quite frankly, was a wreck. It was such a wreck that I'll just describe one situation that was sort of interesting. A prior owner of the property didn't want to fix the gutters, and she was hanging a piece of metal that she kind of put into a V and hung it with a coat hanger from a trellis and dumped into a 55-gallon garbage pail that had a sun pump in it that pumped water downhill in her nose. And so, you know, I spent significant amount of time and effort and money in not only taking care of these types of issues to maintain the property, but we also brought it up to code in the process. The property additionally, as you probably saw, was brought up to seismic. Have not yet had the opportunity to meet any of the council members at the property. I would like to have the opportunity to do that. The house right now, you know, I believe does possess a fair amount of privacy. Obviously, we're in the winter months, and there's very little trees on, these are the trees, so you can barely see the adjoining property during the summer months. And when I first presented my project to the city, all of my, presented my plans to all of my neighbors, and do have supporting letters from all of my neighbors except for one. And I did show it to 18290, and they were agreeable at the time, but then disagreed during the first Site and Architecture meeting. And so when I found that out, it did take, I believe, extensive steps to creating a greater level of privacy. And as Craig pointed out, we did eliminate the side patio, so we eliminated a door. We obscured all the windows that would face the adjoining property. The adjoining property, as you probably have witnessed, is fairly steep in nature, and there's a lot of trees and other trumps in, out of the plain view. On the second story, we did raise the window. We eliminated three windows, and we raised the one window that we still have left in the bedrooms, so that did not from a downward view. The house, the reason I'm asking for the variance and I want to do the addition is that the dining area is very small, and it won't accommodate even a standard dining table, only 10 and a half by 10 and a half. Kitchen is also very small, and I'm just trying to create a livable environment for myself. Addition to that, the property, bedroom. I would like to add that. There's some safety concerns that I'm also trying to address. On the second story, as you walk up the stairs, the existing landing is only 30 inches where it's required to be 36 inches by code. So part of this proposed project does extend that, those extra six inches to bring that to code and to raise. Before I forget the PG&E question, I've been in PG&E discussions for a year and a half, trying to get the gas line moved, and we do have it to the location where the tree is currently. The tree's sort of not in the best of shape. There was a site construction meeting that I was not present at, so I would like the opportunity to get back to you. Basically, what I want me to do is to, there's an existing retaining wall next to the private road that I, there's only a few of them on the private road. There's a gas line that comes up on the side of that road, and they want me to create a planter, that they want to place the new gas meter in, running the road, right where the oak tree is. I'll see if we can move into another location. I do believe that the property, when I purchased the property, that it was, it was not only deteriorated, that it actually deteriorated property value. So I, I do believe, and you know, it's been argued otherwise, that it's deteriorated property value, and we want me to put significant resources towards this project and others.
Councilmember questions? I, I have one.
Yes, please.
The square footage that you're adding on the first floor for that living space is how much? Hang on, hang on. The first floor addition?
Just the first floor addition?
Well, I'd like to know both, first floor and second floor addition, but separately. And the second floor is primarily, is just a master bedroom and bath?
Just a master bedroom and bath, that's it.
Right.
First floor addition is about 714.
Mm-hmm.
And the second floor is, manual math here. Thousand, thousand nine square feet.
So the second floor is larger than the first floor addition?
Second floor is started at 692 and is going to 1701. Second floor is started at 692 and is going to 1701, so...
Yes. So the second story addition matches the square footage of the, what will be the new first, the new living space? Is equivalent to?
Thousand, thousand nine square feet. It's, it's, the existing second floor shows as 692.
Okay.
Square feet. And the proposed square footage of the second floor is 1701, so a difference of 1,009 square feet. Does that sound right?
No, I'm just ask, I'm just asking what, what the new square footage is.
You take the 692 from the 1701, you have an additional 1,009 square feet. Right?
So the second story is adding more square footage than the, than the first story?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because the first floor is 714.
Okay.
And the second floor is 1,009, so that's about 300 more than the first.
And that's for the master and a master bath? Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a section of the home, you can see the picture right there on the ceiling. And that section of the home is...
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Goll.
Thank you. Did you have a neighbor here who wants to make a comment?
Yes, yes, of course. All right. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this topic? Yes. Yes?
So, we... So I'm Dinka Sheikah and that's Master Choroful. We are the owners of 1-8290.
Oh, hang on, hang on. They have their computer plugged in. My cord.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide us with advice.
Mrs. Sheikah.
So, 1-82240 is our property and this is our family property and our life savings. So we paid well over the asking price in 2016 to find, to live in a very secure, serene and private property that we owned. And while we invested in a community like Montesorino, which has got a lot of us at the boys. So they, reading the staff report, we have noted a lot of violations throughout the document, which violates about six of the codes, including the calculus code section and the municipal code and also the design guidelines. So as you all can see, I think, I'm sorry about the person's name here, but Cedric Okanov mentioned about the section 65906, he talked about how evidence can be provided only if the property is deprived of certain privileges. 1-8240 is a 1.2 acre lot, it has got about half acre flat land and it has got a car in the garage, sorry, garage in the home with a total of 2,700 square footage. And it is zoned R144. And this is from the public records that's out in the internet. So as you all can see here, it, you know, it kind of shows the topography of the property with the home, I think this is where the garage is, the pool and the flat land. So looking at all these things and I see that there's a lot of challenges that we need to do, the staff report, wherein we challenge the R120 zoning. The whole calculation that Jeanne just mentioned, and she's not able to answer, we challenge that. We don't agree to the R120 zone. The R144 zone, and we need the setback variances as per the R144 zone. And so our conclusion is that 1-8240 is really not deprived of any privileges, considering that there's such huge land, flat land, pool, property, garage, et cetera. So that is our conclusion.
One, one point to add, this was a historic house. This was purchased in 2016. This, the condition of the house was once, and purchased, but, buildingly purchased. It's not like something posed on there. So it's not something, the modifications of the house, retaining is a part of the pin. This house is benefiting a lot of tax benefits, which is every resident in the city is actually contributing to maintain that house. So we have to take that into account as well.
You know, the property has got a lot of eligibility to expand beyond the current amenities exist on the property. And this is the pictures taken, these are the pictures taken from the Days Avenue corner and you can see the view of the flat land wherein the flat land could leverage to enhance the property. And this is the second code of 65906 that has been violated, which clearly says that any special privileges provided for any variance has to be considered by not affecting any neighborhood properties of the vicinity, which is the vicinity, which clearly is giving a privacy issue, sorry. Invinging, invading all privacy, dripping our, kind of, to making our property value and, you know, causing issues for our family who is limitations with a dense visual impact of 30 feet. Our house is 30 feet level down below from my neighbor's property. And upon that 30 feet level, the proposal is that they're going to put a two-story building about just six foot from the property line. So that is causing hazard to us because in one of the documents they shared, they said that the current, current adobe house is prone to destruction or damage when an earthquake happens. We are just Silicon Valley in the Bay Area. This is where that quickly happens. Why do I agree to have it, I don't know, 60 foot, 52 feet building close to my property knowing that they're building upon about adobe building, which is really not stable? So this contradicts to everything in the staff report saying that it's a safe building upon that they're attaching, upon that they're leaning on. And they also call out that it is prone to earthquake damage. And it is a hazard, not only for them, it's also for us. Yes, and also the constraints color in the staff report, I feel it's all self-imposed. Or we have limitations in the flat land, we want to build it over here, we want to expand it. I agree, it's all the self-imposed because they're not able to come up with a solution to provide their needs by coming up with an all-in-one solution rather than building on the adobe and to the side of it. And also the variance request is really demanding special privileges and the cost of our property value, our privacy and our safety, and it is really unacceptable.
The bedroom is not there. It was not there when they bought. They knew that they bought. It's small, it was there. It was nothing that suddenly kitchen shrunk. It was not like that. So it's all chosen, priced, everything calculated into the math. We don't want to take that hit because somebody made that decision.
And also if you look at this, this is the property of 1.2 acres as for the public records. This is where the additional 1,000, 2,000, sorry, 1,700 square foot is being added. It's close to our property line. It invades our privacy totally because that's the only small space we have our backyard because it's all illegal in here for us. And that is a huge impact for us. And all these data points that we have gathered here is not captured accurately in the staff report. We're having misleading information in the staff report and I've called in the page numbers as to where there was missed due diligence, that's ones that hasn't been documented by the staff.
So this is the 30 feet, what we are talking about. So you can visualize for everybody to see. And now we'll go to the next, next sheet. So this is how the pool and the 30 feet would be. 30 feet from the ground, pool and that's where my kids play and they are teenagers and minors. And so the house is going to come there, 26 feet on top of it and that's how it's going to be. So that is not acceptable for us. And everybody, you know, visualize the impact what this is going to cause.
And the staff report says that because it is 30 feet level down, it is not an impact to us, but actually it's the reverse of it. It's a huge impact to us because that's an innovative place and then soil erosion, earthquake, whatever you may call it, we will be at risk before them. They are putting our family in danger.
I would say on security as well, so we need to have some.
And if we went by a property, if there is a backyard which has not been overlooked by somebody, we walked away from that. Now with this property having, you know, privacy being invaded, if we have to sell the property because we invested in it, I doubt if anybody is going to take it. And of course in Montesorino, people might, but still, it's going to depreciate our property value. This is just to kind of walk through quickly. These are the two properties, I just said properties, we have swimming pool, the, we are at 1 acre yard, they are 1.2 acre lot, the flat land, next one please. And this is where the new addition is, next one please. All right, here you go. This is the other, other view of the property line, the pink pool is the property line. And then you have the story pools, you can see how close it is. That's where the gas leak pipe has been done. Okay, so the neighbor structure is towering over our backyard. You can see a story pool. When you stand in our property, this is the view we see, is towering over our backyard and this is going to impact the social life, our minor kids who are still in school. And when they come to play with the kids and all, with their friends and all, it's going to impact them. This is where they use the zip line, this is where they use the pool, this is where they play with the water balloons. And they will not be happy to kind of having somebody very close to them and not hearing them make noise or kind of feeling conscious that somebody is watching them. And again, as our neighbor Peter has mentioned, has done a great job of putting the plants there, but if you can see the plants, it's not making a dent to the, I don't know, height difference of the looking down. All right, so again, moving on here, the additional municipal code violations, design guide violations, I'm not going to go over all of them because this is here documented for all of your phone review. But this is to show that the core, the roof line is supposed to be designed to minimize the intricate view from the neighborhood. That is, they've been violated. And then the tree has to be, the tree cannot be removed and the vegetation has to be maintained is one of them. And that is clearly not maintained because this tree, which is on the top of the hill for us, which is in the corner of the existing structure, is planned to be removed. And if that is removed, that is going to have soil erosion and also the surface water dilution towards our property. And that is going to our pool area and that's where we're going. And again, so I'm going back to the one more point. It talks about violation of 483 in the design guidelines. The new addition has to be in size, mass scale and height of the existing historical building. And that is truly not happening because the adobe building is a one-story building and the structure that they're proposing is a two-story structure, is a massive structure that is nowhere comparable to the start.
Yeah, and historic condition is like we cannot close the windows of a historic property. So that is a violation as well. So basically we are adding the property to close the actual windows of our... There are multiple violations, we documented all of them here for your reference. We don't want to take up a lot of time, go explain effectively, but there are a lot of violations in this.
Okay.
All right, so again, this is something that, just in the report, they say that the standards, the secretary of interior standards have been met, but as you see here, this is the previous adobe. They're putting the second story on top of adobe, some of them. And again, earthquake issue, there's instability issues there, but you know, you, this clearly violates the number nine and number 10 of the interior standards. They're not really addressing the standards for the historic reservations as well. And this is as per the recommendation from the historic building we have regulations. The historic windows should not be blocked to accommodate new building uses, but that is exactly what they're doing. They're trying to close up the, they're adding next to the adobe building to close up the windows of the historic. And this is our summary, so we strongly and totally object to the proposed plan and the variance and also the zoning of 1-8240 to protect our privacy, safety, value and health.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? May I recognize the applicant?
Can I speak with a neighbor?
Yes, of course. I would prefer if everyone spilled out.
My, my recommendation would be that, you know, you continue with public comment until comment from all members of the public are received and then provide the applicant with the rebuttal opportunity.
That's great. I forgot to ask people to fill out a card. Oh, great, wonderful. If you can hand it to the city clerk, that'd be great. Thank you. Yes, of course.
Lost my voice, so... So hello, I'm Heidi Miller. I actually live directly across the street at 1-8232 Dave Avenue from Peter. And overall, I'm here in support of what Peter is trying to do to his home. My general position is, he bought the property, he's the homeowner, but I think he should be able to do what he wishes with the property. That's just my personal preference. He's invested a significant amount of money and time into a piece of property that he should have the right to decide what it looks like. Peter is probably looking to even take it up a story and I'm perfectly fine with that. We look directly across the street of Peter. He's very respectful and sincere in his efforts to involve the neighbors in this entire process. Recently completed a beautiful restoration to a very challenging adobe house that already had a number of challenges and restrictions imposed on it from the start. I've been a residence there for five years. It was in complete and total disrepair. I mean, the gal that lived there had been in the house for 60 plus years, I think she was born and raised there, and I just don't think had the means to take care of it and had all kinds of situations jerry-rigged on the property like the drainage that Peter mentioned. So when he moved in and began restoration, he immediately improved not only the look of the property, I can't even tell you how much better it looks. The roof is redone, the plantings have been redone, the painting on the adobe, I mean, I am proud we have an adobe structure. I'm thrilled that I have an adobe structure across the street from us and I love that Peter is interested in maintaining that historically. So I think he's increased the value of the property. He's always very thoughtful to let us know what he plans on doing and when, and offers copies of the plans as they are developed. He's always been in consultation with us. When a difference of opinion rises with another neighbor, I have noticed that Peter has often tried to make things amenable. He did plant some screen and those screens, they're beautiful. I saw them when they were planted, they were just planted, so they will fill in, they will grow, it will spring. It's, it's kind of just a new planting right now. My hope is that all parties will be able to come together to solve the issue respectfully with council, but my overall wish is still for the homeowner to determine what he wants to do, maintaining that original adobe structure.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would also like to speak? All right, seeing that, Mr. Goll, you may come up.
I think Craig would like to speak to a couple things.
Of course.
The, first, the pine tree that was presented in the previous presentation is now being removed, so I still remember that. The flat area, I'm not sure if that's a half an acre, I think it's less than that, but there's a flat area that I do acknowledge. The other thing that I do want to mention is that the existing adobe house, there was previously a letter that was, that was written from an architect that it was potentially, adobe structures could potentially be unstable. I did hire an architect, an engineer, his name was Roy Tools. He got his PhD in structural engineering from Stanford and he wrote 10 pages on size based to build the Getty Museum. He was my engineer. We took the roof off the structure and we drilled 43 three-inch diameter holes from the top of the structure, adobe structure, to the base of the foundation. We put a three-quarter inch stainless steel rod all the way down, stuck it up into the roof area. We routed to 10,000 PSI and we put a four-by-six piece of pressure treated blocking that was attached to the rafters and it bolted on top. And I can tell you that that structure is extremely safe at present. In addition to that, we've underpinned the rear side of the structure and we put 12 caissons. Roy also designed the underpinning. We put a 5x3 grade beam and 12 piers in the rear side of the house. The proposed addition will not be made out of adobe, it will be made out of modern construction that will conform to modern...
I'd like to address the concerns about us not meeting the secretary. Preface that by saying that I am considered an expert in these standard... I do reviews for other cities. for other cities, called Secretary of Interior Standards Review, for historic building proposals. With the state, number nine, that's the most controversial, where it says that it should be compatible with what their grantee was from. And the state architect in the historic preservation office has told me personally that presidents err on the side of being compatible, commercial buildings err on the side of being differentiated. So that is what we've done. Second, there, it's a bit of a misnomer to say that you can't close windows. You can do what is necessary for a modern lifestyle to a historic building, a typical house. And we only changed one window. That is, the window going from the dining room into the kitchen, that into a doorway, an open doorway. So it still has the characteristics in the thick wall. We didn't open the fire, we just took the window out. One of the other sections is that it should be replaceable or restorable, and we could put it back in the future. Second window is being enclosed and turned into a stainless window, so the windows from the kitchen, there isn't any change there. The portion down is the part that we're tearing off. Got my issue with that, but anyway, we are totally, I can assure you, in compliance. Part of what is restricted, that we can't. Where can we really build at the other end, where we're putting the garage? Where can we really get a modern lifestyle by building a separate life in this house? Walls are 24 inches thick. Well, the square footage might seem large on the outside.
Thank you. Just a minute. I think we've had a late walk-in, Mr. Rudin, regarding item six. Can we call him up?
Um, yeah, I mean, we can, certainly. I think we still need to provide the applicant with an opportunity to respond if the applicant desires, but otherwise, yeah, that's fine.
Would you like to respond now, or would you like to wait for?
I mean, I believe that I'm increasing privacy from its current level substantially. The other thing that I want to make sure I point out is that the six-foot-six setback is just one small point on the addition. Most of the addition that I'm proposing is too fluffy, so I want to make sure. Six foot, all the way down. And that one specific point, currently, as Craig did mention before, there was previously a patio there where I've already taken out, out in the harbor, and that was, so we're only talking about six inches of addition.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Counsel recognizes Andrew Anderson. Oh, Andrea.
Andrea.
Sorry, I apologize.
I'm a resident of Montessorino to Andrea Anderson. First of all, I didn't know we have such a nice historic building in our neighborhood. I almost wondered now whether we should draw some attention to it. It's just a plaque, something, pardon all who does it with HP Garage, but we're not as big as that, but just something to really acknowledge, that we have some historic buildings and something special in our neighborhood, because you don't see it, you don't notice it in the drive. But that's not my question, that's just a side note. So with the rezoning, are there any implications that this could have for how you can use the land? I'm just wondering, it's a big plot, many of us have big plots in Montessorino. Rezoning means you can sell half of it, build on it, that could lead to a big avalanche following that others might want to do it too, and that it changes the character of the area. Could you explain what the rezoning really means or could imply?
Yeah, Ms. Hamilton, you can answer that question.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a rezoning. Again, the zoning is remaining R144, which is a minimum lot size of one acre. However, because there's a average slope of 23-plus percent on this property, given all the slope density formula, it basically causes the effective development standards for the existing development on the site to be subject to the R120. That being said, if somebody wanted to, you know, subdivide this property, we would still look at the slope density formula in another way, and it would require, given the slope and the size, that you have a 70,000-square-foot lot. So therefore, this lot cannot be subdivided in its current size and slope. So it is what it is.
So that's for sure, it would not be subdivided?
Under today's regulations.
Yeah.
Okay?
Because my observation is it's quite flat down there.
Doesn't matter if it's flat.
It doesn't matter?
No. It's the size and the current regulations related to slope versus size. Anything that's 10%, average 10% slope or greater, you have to run it through a slope density formula if you want to subdivide it. If you wanted to subdivide this land, you'd need a 70,000, two 70,000-square-foot lots. It doesn't even have that. So.
And regulations like that, do they change? Do they?
You know, these are, these are possibly questions that don't necessarily-
Yeah, we don't know the future, so.
Relate to the project right now, so you can certainly direct them to Ms. Hamilton-
Thank you.
Later. Thank you. All right, may I close public comment now? I, no. I, I think, I think, I think we can, everyone has said their piece. I believe I'd like to close public discussion so that we can return to the council and discuss. Thank you. All right. Any, any questions, any concerns? Councilmember Labouvet, you're smiling.
I'm smiling.
Looks like you're about to say something, so.
All right, I'll go first. Be the guinea pig. I, I did go visit the site, and, and I did spend quite a bit of time reviewing what happened during the site and architectural meeting. And there were two of them, and so one, there was one meeting, and then it was continued, where they went out and saw the site and came back. And I think with regard to the site development and tree removal part of this package, I just, I want to make some comments, or, or maybe I'll just read some of the quotes that I pulled out of the site and architectural meeting, because I had very much the same impression. So Commissioner Wade made the comment, "I was amazed at how tall it was. The story pole on the corner appeared to be almost 40 feet." Commissioner White made a comment that, "I was also impressed with the mass that you see from the side. I don't know that all of the changes that the applicant has made necessarily satisfy the neighbor who is in opposition to the proposed project." And so I had very much the same impression. So when I go stand at the neighbor's pool site, you know, the story poles were very clearly visible to me. It's clearly a very uphill slope. The story poles are very prominent. It looks to me like a three-story building, you know, although it's only two stories, you know, the house has to come out, and so, so it does have the appearance. I mean, I guess if we look at, at site drawing number five, you know, it almost looks like an apartment building in the way that this is rendered, which for me does not follow the design guidelines for, for hillsides. So, although when you come around to the front of the, of the building and what has been recognized by other public comment, it does integrate quite well when viewed from the front, but overall, the design for me is not consistent with the design guidelines when viewed from the neighbor's side, the south and the rear. You know, it's, I think it's just basically by extending the existing second-floor addition to the existing rear structure edge, increasing the height by three and a three-quarters feet, and not incorporating any step-down elements. The addition has the look of a three-story vertical structure on a prominent hillside, and does not minimize the visual impact or flow with the land. Specifically, if we want to kind of look at our design guidelines, which we're supposed to be following, you know, item 4A5 speaks to a building's mass. Roof form and projecting elements should be designed so as to minimize the visual impact of a building on the slope. Roof line should be designed in ways to minimize interference with views from neighbors' properties. And there's a good example on page nine that shows one example of what would be expected in Montessorino, and one example of what's not expected. And so the picture that shows what's not expected looks very prominent on the hillside, and that's, I think, what we have in this case. I think further, there's item 4B3, which talks about structures on a prominent and highly visible hilltops or ridge sides, ridge lines should flow with the land. It may be required to be one-story. I think that, that applies. And then 4C1, on a sloping site, the structure should be stepped down the hill, utilizing one-story building elements, avoid cantilevers and stilts over downhill slopes. And there's another example on page 13 of the design guidelines, which to me is not being followed by this project. Furthermore, if I look at the rear west, you know, three-story vertical structure design, including the dining patio and the master bedroom balcony, this clearly invades the neighbor privacy. You know, I disagree with the staff assessment that, that the heavy tree canopy and the applicant-modified window design and, and the modifications of windows along the southern side really satisfy this, and mitigate this, this privacy concern by the neighbors. So if we look to item 4A4, open space and landscape areas should visually blend with adjacent properties and be consistent with neighborhood and sensitive to the rural character of the city. Buildings should be oriented such that outdoor space will vertically connect between properties and extend a sense of open space while maintaining a sense of privacy. I think this, you know, the, you know, I can appreciate that, that they're trying to cram this remodel in between the adobe and the property line, but it really does violate the neighbor, the neighboring property space and privacy, and, and really imposes a lot of bulk in their direction, and I think ultimately affects their overall property value. I have some more comments until, when we get to this, and talk about the setback variance, but maybe we should just talk about the site and architectural aspects first, or do you want me to continue and just do it all in one?
I, I would say continue and do it all in one.
All right, I'll, I'll keep going. So, so when it comes to the, the setback variance, I think the, you know, the staff assessment was that the applicant is, you know, essentially has to be deprived of privileges other property owners in the vicinity and the same zoning district enjoy due to special circumstance. I also, there was quite a lot of discussion about this in the Site and Architectural Committee that I'll share. So Commissioner Harrington, an excerpt of what her comments were, "I have a problem with granting of this variance. I understand that the property has its constraints. My property was significantly cheaper because of an easement that runs through the property, and the same was true with this property. If I were to go in and say, I want to build closer to my neighbor because I have this constraint, I don't feel like I have the right to do that. I can't recommend the variance portion." And then Commissioner Wade chimed in and said, "We just don't hand out variance because it's not convenient or because they're tough, they're in a tough spot. It just goes a little too far for me to be comfortable in having trouble recommending the variance piece of this." And then Commissioner White also said he agreed. There was some discussion then where they started to sort of go, in my opinion, down a rat hole, where they tried to come up with some sort of a compromise, like what would be a suitable compromise? How could they move this forward? How could they try to appease all of the parties? And they did start to discuss this compromise of, well, maybe if we allowed for the first-floor setback violation, but not the second floor. In, in my opinion, you know, so they, they eventually settled with the motion that was made, which was, they didn't recommend the second-story setback. For me, just moving, even if you could, and the architect said he could not, take the, the existing second floor and just push it over to, to, to satisfy the 20-foot second-story setback. But even if they could do that, I still don't think that that would alleviate the privacy concerns and the other design guideline violations based on having a three-story structure sitting on top of that big hill. So, so for me, for me, I'm not, I'm not very keen on, on granting the setback variance, either the first floor or the second floor. And, and for me, I would, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and let's, let's, maybe that, that can be, I'd like to hear what some of the other council members feel about this. We can discuss in more detail.
Sure, sure. Councilmember Lahey, would you like to go?
I, I think I agree with Dan's analysis on the property, generally speaking. We had, we had the site commission look at it, and had extensive discussions on this matter. They also reviewed the property. I mean, the historical guideline, you know, the fact that it's a historic structure, I mean, I appreciate that and congratulate you for doing all that, but I don't think that should be used as a sword to, you know, affect what you want to accomplish and expand, because now it's a historic structure, so I can't build anywhere else, so let me just go ahead and ask for a variance. A variance should be very rarely granted on these kind of structures, and it should really be that there is no choice. I mean, there may not be much of a choice, but that's, that's the house that was bought. There's, there's also other areas which could be explored, and they may, or may, and hopefully they won't violate the adobe structure. So, so I'm inclined to agree with Dan's analysis.
Can I go next? Yes, of course. Councilmember Turner?
Like Councilmember Labouvet, I spent a great deal of time listening to the tapes, and I also looked at the design guidelines, as well as the report from GNE, as well as site and architecture. And I, I can go back into what you had said, 4A1, 4A3, 4A5, the trees. And in addition, I wanted to add 6A2, I didn't hear you say that.
No.
But I think at this point in time, I want to be sensitive to the next-door neighbor rather than the neighbor looking across the, the street. When you live right by somebody where you have kids, and they have a three-story structure, looking down on your kids swimming and, and playing could be a little bit disconcerting. So I'm, I'm inclined not to approve this.
Okay, thank you. You go then.
Yeah, I looked at the, obviously, the same issues, have many of the same concerns. The story poles really tell the story here, and, and I really appreciate that, that we as a city are using those, because they get everyone's attention, and they really show you something visually. And quite frankly, I can't imagine anyone on the lower lot not being egregiously shocked by this, that you look up and it is literally three stories towering over. Right now, it looks natural on the hill. Pushing it out four or five feet is going to be a, a major change, but you're pushing it out a huge amount and then squaring it up. And, and it's just really not an acceptable look from below, and that's reflected in the design guidelines, which give us actual objective standards that this should have been designed to in the first place. So the, my view of this would be very different if the outreach had been made and made successfully with the neighbors. If the downstream neighbor had come and said, If the downstream neighbor had come and said, "We didn't like it, but there was outreach and there was compromise and there was a solution that satisfies us," then perhaps I could be more open to this, although I still think that it's way out of line with the Monte Sereno standards. And I also come to the same concerns, which is, and I think Councilmember Lahey said it well, buying something and then using that as the sword to force people around to adjust to that just doesn't feel right. I'm a problem solver and would love to look for solutions. It sounds like a lot of people have tried to look for solutions here. Nobody's looked hard enough to find one yet, but I wanted to put one idea out there for the future. And that is, I would be interested in hearing about reducing this to the original adobe footprint and treating it as an ADU and building your dream home on the property down towards the flat. It would be 1,900 square feet. I don't know exactly how that would fit and whether that would be required to come to us, but certainly I would be open to historic preservation of the original adobe structure, downsize it and treat it as a, as a feature for Monte Sereno to be proud of, but treat it as an ADU and have us accommodate the dream house on the flatter section. So that's my position at the moment.
I can certainly empathize with both parties and I've spoken with both. I can certainly understand the constraints that the applicant has with respect to the historic property. And I also, you know, empathize with the neighbors and their, what seems to, you know, certainly feels like a very oppressive building bearing down on them, given that they're 30 feet below. It sounds like perhaps we are not anywhere in a position to approve any of this and maybe this is something that we should kick back to site and architecture? Should there be some more thoughtful planning, other creative solutions to, I think the biggest, the biggest problem is the variance issue, the closeness to the property line. So I'm wondering if that would be something that we can send back to site and architecture and perhaps encourage you to develop some sort of alternate or alternative plans that would potentially meet our concerns, the council's concerns? Is that something we can do or shall we just go ahead and, do we have a motion to?
I think.
I'm not quite sure what to do here.
Is there my?
Yeah, I think.
Kind of ping ponging about things like in architecture. Really, you know, if it goes back to site and architecture, it's really completely dependent.
Right.
You can start all of this.
All right.
I don't know, I think they've looked at this. You know, you act on portions of this application that you feel.
Okay.
I have a, I have a comment. I mean, for me, for me.
Does that make sense?
No, yes, thank you for clarifying. I think, I think the idea was that site and architecture actually came up with some sort of, some sort of compromise, which was not granting the variance on the second story so that visually the impact would be less.
Variance on the first floor.
Mm-hmm. And that would be.
And approval of everything else.
Right.
Okay. Right, yes.
And so, you know, in listening to the tapes though, I don't know how they got to that compromise in that, you know, all of those shocking statements that they made and then they said, "Oh, let's grandfather the first floor." So that, to me, I'm not sure if it got hurried or the thought, you know, and maybe they forgot about the three-story piece of it, but for me, the three-story piece is the most significant piece of this. You know, the site and architecture, they did make some recommendations and so there was an opportunity of the applicant to modify the plans in between then and now and we got the same plans that came before them. So I think that what we should do here is just move to deny the application as submitted. And I can make a motion for that. I'll move to deny the application as submitted based on vertical mass, visual and privacy impact, lack of incorporating any stepped elements on prominent hillside and encroachment of setbacks.
Let me just ask the applicant a question. Is there some part of your application, for example, moving the garage that would work for you and denying everything else? Do we have a, do you want to address that?
So. Because I think it goes site and architectural twice. Think that I need some voluntary adjustments to my proposed plans as. So I was attempting to address the neighbor. Not about them. You know, and obviously, money and other time and effort into this project that I'd like to make it work somehow. So following where you're going with it, approval on the, well, the two trees so that I can put my gas in there in the garage and then bring those. How many of what your concerns are. And obviously, as I noted.
All right, thank you. I think given that, it would be nice for everyone to have that opportunity. Should we, is there, I mean, I suggest a motion to approve the application with the exception of the variance as submitted. Is that?
No, no.
I know we have two motions. We haven't, don't have a second on that one, so let's go back.
Yeah, I was just going to amend Mr. LeBeuve's motion to allow the garage to be moved and accept everything else.
Yeah, the one, the one problem I have with that, and maybe Jeannie can comment on the logistics here, is that a new project or, you know, if you, if you cement that garage into place, then you end up with, you know, no ability to expand on that side of the house if you choose or desire?
Yeah. Maybe you could consider that, but by approving the garage doesn't move down from, do we?
I think you may have misunderstood. I wasn't suggesting you move the garage next to the adobe. I'm just saying, in your application, you're asking the garage to be moved to a new location. And if you allow that, at least you'll get your garage moved.
Oh, no, we're not moving. We're going to.
Or you're building a new one?
Yeah.
So if you allow that, that should not be an issue for you or you don't want that to be allowed?
No, sorry, I wasn't saying we didn't want.
Well, okay, that's what.
We're saying we didn't want to add on.
No, yeah, we're not suggesting that. We're just saying, one part of your application was to let you build your new garage and said, we can, we may be able to at least approve that. So you can do that if you want. You don't want to do it, you don't have to.
Can I ask one more question? So there was a, there was a tree that was being removed as a result of the garage. Is there any possibility to move the garage to preserve that tree also?
Well, one of the things we're constrained by. Cars went out here. Structures are not supposed to. So we set a fact.
Yeah, it's about 10 feet, right? You're pushing it back about 10 feet. Well, there was a suggestion that perhaps PG&E can reconsider the location for one of the trees.
Oh, for one of them. I think the site and architectural actually did too, we discussed the trees, so. All the trees were in the garage.
All right. Well, back to the council. Well, then, given that the applicant is asking, is willing to step back on the addition and focus on the garage and the trees, can we potentially consider that?
So, if I may, I think that I'd like to see it as a whole. We've got a lot of concerns nowadays with ADUs and junior ADUs and additional structures now with the garage. I think that it behooves us to see the lot and the plan as a whole, rather than doing this piecemeal and moving the garage, having a brand newly built garage and having taken out a couple of trees, that then puts the weight of the development for sure right here on this. I can see how this neighbor could spitefully design an inch in from the property line, having been frustrated in the original purpose here, would not get the glorious master bedroom upstairs, would get a normal-sized master bedroom, would not get the glorious great room that's proposed here, but would get an adequate kitchen, but would then be coming back with the same exact structure, not encroaching an inch beyond the property line. I think that same structure is still suffering from the same fault, which is from the bottom of the property that supports this to the top of the roof line is fully three stories. And that's the problem with the design guidelines. So I think that, I don't want to encourage downsizing the plans to simply not require the variance with the suggestion that that's going to solve my problem. I think that the design guideline problem of this being stuck on this corner and being so massive and effectively three stories tall is the problem. Maybe there's a way to step it down the slope and to come out. Maybe there's not a way to do that. This may be that this house is constrained to what was originally purchased here and that may be just something that has to be worked with. And we may not get the modern kitchen. You might get something creative within a historic structure, but I don't see that we should be doing this piecemeal and encouraging the idea that building on this corner is going to solve anyone's problem here. It might with a properly designed plan that satisfies the neighbor and the design guidelines and comes back with something that we can look at and say, "Yeah, that's something that is a very positive addition here." I think we're being, this is being forced on us, saying, "I want to build this house, now give me a variance," as opposed to coming in here and saying, "I bought this house, here's how I'd like to improve it and here's how that fits within the guidelines."
All right.
So I would be, I would actually give a second to Councilmember LeBeuve's original motion if he wants to bring that forward, which is, we just simply reject and with the invitation to bring back something that is really something to be excited about here.
I'll restate that motion if you'd like.
For the council's benefit, it's usually beneficial to actually have a written resolution you adopt. So certainly, the council could direct staff and the city attorney to bring back a resolution for your adoption, denying the projects for the reasons that have already been stated on the record.
All right. Then we'll ask you to do that.
I would recommend you put that in a form of a motion.
Okay, I move to direct staff to draft a resolution regarding, including.
To deny the application as submitted. Based on discussed elements such as vertical mass, visual and privacy impact, lack of incorporating any stepped elements into a prominent hillside structure and encroachment
There's a motion in progress, but Mr. Rudin, is that possible? I think there's a motion in progress.
It'll be up to the mayor there.
Yes.
The suggestion that I proposed the garage came from council. So, you know, I don't see that being, it's only ready, so, you know, obviously.
Thank you.
I guess you're suggesting that you'd like to at least have us approve the garage being moved or the new garage being constructed? Is that what you're asking or I?
I would like the garage to be.
At least that part.
The trees.
The tree part I don't understand, but Mr. LeBeuve probably has a better sense of that. But I think if we, if we can separate, you know, at least grant him to allow him to move the garage, I don't think it hurt anything from the neighbor's perspective because that's on the other side of the house.
I think the point was more to come back with something, you know, to, you know, we're not even going to make a resolution tonight. We have to come back with a resolution, so, or the formal resolution, so.
If the garage.
And it'll just.
The architectural commissions.
Yeah, it won't come here. It'll go to site and architecture.
Yes.
To get that same approval.
Right. And so he's going to have to spend, spend, spend more time and money in getting that done. So if he can approve that now, if there's no serious issue with that.
The accessory structure in front of the garage is exclusive for.
Application, yeah.
It's not, the addition to the home is not. After the site.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the W.
Jean, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't the council, if they wanted to approve that garage, they would also need to act on at least one of the tree removal requests?
That one opening is a good one.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I guess, if I may, to speak this, if we bring back resolutions, one resolution could be the one that would deny everything. One resolution that we could consider at the next meeting would be to, and we clean this up so that it's nice and clean, approve the garage and approve a tree removal permit. We'll by that point have feedback from the owner as to whether there is meaningful adjustment available from PG&E that would suggest keeping that other tree. I don't, I'm not wed to that tree. I saw where it is. I banged my head on it walking by there and I understand the reason for moving it. And if, if that's the right place to put the gas for the homeowner and for PG&E, I don't really have a problem removing that tree. That's one vote only here. But if it's easy to work with PG&E and get them to move this thing five feet over. But if it's easy to work with PG&E and get them to move this thing five feet over... Right. But, so I would say, an alternative resolution that would come back at the next meeting would be approve the tree removal permit and the garage, as it's being asked for here. And the only question would be, would it, does the homeowner want both trees at that, in that resolution that we come back next time? It sounds like there may well be votes to grant that. But we, so we have those two alternative resolutions available to us.
I think that's a great idea. I think that also affords us the opportunity to visit the property and see for ourselves as well, for information gathering.
Okay. So, well, there's some motions on the floor right now.
You might have to amend that motion.
And I had asked, requested the amendment to allow the garage to be moved. Now, you're talking about the PG&E tree, which is a separate tree than the one that's the garage moving tree.
Well, I'm saying that this would be a way that we could have both trees. If the homeowner needs both trees, under the tree removal permit, while we're moving the garage, one tree goes. If we need to give that second tree removal, we don't need to do that piecemeal. We can find out if that one needs to go, then that'll be there. So, it'd be the tree removal of the two trees, plus move the garage, would be an alternative that we could approve at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think, I would, I would like to preserve that 24-inch oak tree. It's, that's the bigger of the two trees.
That's the garage tree?
That's, no. The big tree is the gas line tree.
We're not discussing that at this point. We're just saying, if you allow the garage, new garage to be built, it doesn't affect the big tree. It affects another tree, I guess.
It was a 12-inch tree, yes.
So, if you're okay with that being removed, then they can move the garage. And we can grant them that, so they don't have to go through this whole process again, just for that particular thing. And then, if they want to pursue their application again, after they made a deal with their neighbor, maybe they can do a lot line adjustment again with the neighbor and see if that works. And they could come back on the rest of the application, but at this point, at least they can get the garage moved.
So, does staff only have to prepare one resolution? Or do I...
Well, staff's resolution would basically be to deny the permit, except to allow the garage, new garage unit to be built, with the tree that's there to be moved. That's, I mean, that's a resolution.
I think that needs to be put in a formal motion.
Well, I'm suggesting that to Mr. Laboue. I mean, it's his motion, so, suggesting that is an amendment.
Second motion to override the first motion?
It'll be an amendment to his motion, I guess. If he accepts it, then it'll be part of his motion.
At this point, I can't recall whether Mr. Laboue's motion was ever seconded, so...
I don't think it was.
Okay. In that case, we have, unless someone seconds it, we have no motions on the floor, so we can make any motions.
Oh, it was? Oh, by Turner?
Oh, okay. My bad.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Turner.
Friendly amendment?
And there could be two motions made. You make the first motion to deny it, and the second motion to approve the garage. Bifurcate it.
And then, the second motion is to reconsider it first.
So, do I have a motion?
Yeah, so the second motion will need a second. It's offered as an amendment, and then it'd be part of the same motion, if you accept the amendment. If you don't accept the amendment, there will be a separate motion, so tell me whether you accept it or not.
So, why don't we vote on the first motion first and see if we approve it or not? And then, if we don't approve it, then we go for the second.
Can you re, can we restate that motion? So, I think, I'm confused.
All right.
Can we restate the motion?
Mr. Laboue, your motion, please.
Okay. So, we move to deny the application as submitted, based on vertical mass, visual and privacy impact, lack of incorporating any stepped elements on prominent hillside, and encroachment of setbacks. That, that's the first motion. So, basically, that denies everything. And then, as Mr. Leonardis is suggesting, there can be a second motion to then come back and grant the garage in one tree removal.
Yeah, that would be an amendment to your motion, basically, to amend the motion to say deny everything, except...
It can be one motion. So, Mr. Laboue recommended a motion, which ultimately Mayor Turner took and got a second from, excuse me, Mayor Lawler took and got a second from Councilmember Turner. And the motion could be seconded here by somebody, again, since Mr. Laboue made the motion again. And then, a friendly amendment to the motion can be made. So, that's, if you want to do it all in one. So, the motioner can agree to the terms that Councilmember Elahay had just suggested, and then the seconder agrees to those terms. And then, you can vote with the amended motion. Or you can make two motions.
Mr. Rudin?
Yeah, usually, you know, under the rules of procedure, there's, there's two ways to get, to get to this result. One is, Daniel, as the original movement, can withdraw his motion, enter a new motion. Assuming that Dan does not wish to do that, then the council can move to amend Dan's motion, and then that motion would get voted on first before the motion that Dan put on.
Do we have a motion?
Well, he's got a motion. Yeah, I'm offering a friendly amendment to that motion, basically to deny everything except construction of the garage.
And so, you need a second?
As an amendment, do I need a second?
Mr. Laboue has to agree to the friendly amendment.
Yeah, he has to agree.
And then, somebody has to second it. And then, we just have one motion. So, that's another way of doing it.
Okay. And I will agree to adding the garage accessory unit and removal of one tree.
And the second has to second that.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Don't ask this to repeat it.
I can repeat it. I've repeated it like four times now, so.
So, you're going to make the motion?
He's making the amended motion. Including of the garage and the one tree removal.
Right.
And that was seconded by Mayor Lawler.
And that's, the one tree removal is the garage tree, the tree...
Yes. The 12-inch tree.
Direct staff to prepare a resolution accomplishing that.
Correct. Appropriate resolution.
So, do I have to click on withdraw motion, or no?
I've got you, I've got you in there as the motion, then I'm looking for the second.
That will be Mayor second. Back to motion again. All right.
You should be able to vote.
No.
I know it's, it's...
Okay.
So, it says different, but it's...
I know. I've got it noted. It comes, it's pre-programmed in there.
Okay.
But I have a note. Passes, the motion passes 5-0, and that was to approve the garage and approve one tree removal of the tree, the 10-inch tree.
12-inch, 12-inch tree. Yes.
All right.
A post-prepare resolution be brought back to you at your next meeting.
As mayor, I request, it's 9 o'clock. Does, would everybody like a three-minute break? All right. Three-minute break.
I will keep the staff report on this brief. The last council meeting, the council introduced and waived by title only a new ordinance to implement the new state ADU laws that require the city to rework a number of its ADU regulations. Following the city council's introduction of that ordinance, in my office received communications from Californians for homeownership, basically pointing out some ambiguities in the ordinance, which at this point, I'm recommending that the council correct by alteration. The language that I'm suggesting to change is on pages eight and nine of the ordinance. The first issue that I'm suggesting to correct is clarifying that the numerical limitations that apply in the ordinance are not based with the city's prohibiting all ADUs except for the state streamlined ADUs that are subject to 65852.2E. And then, similarly, on page eight, I'm recommending a minor modification to make it clear that the city is following the streamlining requirements in 65852.2E.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any council member questions?
Go ahead, please.
So, the, we received an objection last time, I guess, and I understand you run it through that attorney, the housing, not authority, but are they comfortable with the changes in this language, or do you still have an issue?
After, after discussing this with, and pointing out frankly, my interpretation of the city's ADU ordinance, he indicated that this addressed substantially their concerns that they had with the city's ADU provisions, so.
When you say substantially, does that mean there's some ambiguity or anything?
In part, the ambiguity that results is the fact that there are conflicting provisions in state law, and state law is not entirely clear as to what criteria you can attach to the detached ADUs that are subject to the streamlining provisions in 65852.2E. We anticipate that HCD will issue some sort of guidelines indicating what, if any, additional standards can be applied, including standards that the city is obligated to set for all their classes of projects. So, that's it.
Any other questions?
So, is this considered a second reading, or this is a redo of the first reading?
So, what I would be asking the council to do is to vote to amend the ordinance that was introduced, and because you're voting to amend that ordinance that was introduced, this would count as the first reading, and then it could come back on the consent calendar for adoption at the subsequent reading.
Okay.
Does that mean, oh, sorry?
No, go ahead. Any other questions? That's fine.
May I?
You may, Councilmember Turner.
Does that mean that, that we won't be able to adopt the ADU by March then?
So, so we won't be compliant with state law until the second reading?
Hey, you didn't ask permission.
I know.
So...
Councilmember Laboue.
Assuming that the council wanted to introduce this alteration, it could adopt the ordinance on February 18th, which would mean that the ordinance would go into effect 30 days from then, which, pardon my bad math, but given that there's fewer days in February, it would probably be March 20th. The state ADU laws did go into effect effective January 1st of this year, so we're...
We're implementing them already.
Yeah.
Because we have to.
Yes.
I'd like to open this to public comments. We have a Tony Jeans. Speak.
I read the last one. Changes which are, I'm seeing, saving. I had a question more than anything. And I'm looking at page two. I don't know if you have that ordinance, but it's actually a table showing three different zoning districts, R18, R120, and R144. And it's talking about the size limitations. And it seems to me that a one-size-fits-all approach is probably wrong. And so, I'm not quite sure whether you were forced into that, or whether you came to that voluntarily. If I were at it, I would probably think that on an R18 lot, you probably would restrict it to 850 square foot, period. I don't know if the state allows you to restrict the second one to 1,000 feet. Know that it's 850 square feet as a single bedroom, and I don't know if it's a mandate that you have to allow 1,000 feet. So, that's question one. I think it's appropriate at R120, 850 and 1,000. And I'm not sure why that you've used the R144 to 1,000 feet, whereas you currently allow 1,200 on much larger lots like an acre lot. So, you have a lot of ADUs out there at the moment that are now 1,200 feet a lot, a significant number. And now, you're reducing that on the R144, which seems as though it's a little bit restrictive as opposed to the R18 and the R120 lots, which are obviously much smaller. And so, if I had, if I had a choice, I'd go 850 to 850, 850 to 1,000, and 850 to 1,200, not changing what you have now. And I don't know if the fact that you have existing ADUs out there that are 1,200 feet, and someone says, "Well, why can't I do 1,200 feet on my acre lot, or three acre lot, or 12 acre lot, or however large a lot they have in the R144 zoning district?" So, that would be the area that, if I'm not allowed to reduce the R18, I think it might be worth considering leaving the R144 at 1,200, seeing as you have a lot that are already built and being built, and you've created a little bit of an anomaly from now on. That was my comment. Apart from that, I think, Jean, you've done a great job bringing this together.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, would you like to answer his question?
Well, staff's original proposal was to keep the allowable square footage for the R144 at 1,200. It was the council's will to have them all at 850 and 1,000.
And that was to, to be aligned with state guidelines?
The state does allow you to go up to 1,200.
Yeah, so the state, state requires us to set the maximum size at no less than 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet, if the ADU will provide more than one bedroom. The city council could authorize up to 1,200.
Yeah. Which is what it had been. So, staff's proposal was to retain that current allowance.
But we can still, we can still authorize that additional square footage. Mr. Laboue?
So, we had this, we had this discussion last time, so you're welcome to go back and listen to the tape. But the rationale behind this was that the state is imposing and continues to impose new requirements on ADUs. And so, in the current incantation of ADU laws, you're now allowed a junior ADU and an ADU, plus the resident structure, right? And so, you essentially have three structures per lot. And so, the rationale was that since the state continues to change the ground rules on us and continues to add density, you know, beyond our local will and ability to regulate that density, we chose to go with the state minimums across the board. If somebody on a large lot chooses to build an accessory structure, they can go through the normal site and architecture planning process if they choose, but, but we're only going to ministerially approve structures that are state-mandated.
No, they can't go through, no. The ordinance as proposed sets a maximum 1,000 square feet ADU. They can't go through site and architecture to get 1,200, correct?
Well, but they, can't they build like any, you know, if your lot's big enough, can't you build any assess, some other structure?
You can build an accessory structure. You can't build an accessory unit.
Right, right.
And you can't build an accessory structure and then use it as an accessory unit. So, you're limited to 1,000 square foot for any accessory structures on a R144. So, the 1,200 accessory dwelling unit was modified to 1,000 by council.
So, just reiterating, I think it's almost anomalous to have 1,200 feet out there now and suddenly restrict it with, I mean, on larger lots. I'm not, I, I think it should be smaller, smaller. Having said that, that was the only point that I was making.
And I just wanted to clarify... And I just wanted to clarify that, yeah, you can have three dwelling units, but it can only be in two physical structures. The junior ADU has to be attached either to the primary structure or to a detached ADU, just so that's on the record.
So, the junior ADU would just be part of the 1,000 square foot structure then or the main house?
A junior ADU has to be attached to either your primary structure or your detached accessory dwelling unit. And it can be independent or you can share. And it is sanitary facilities and it is limited to 500 square feet.
It's like a nanny's quarters. You can share a bathroom. You can't share with the main house and you can have a plug-in appliance. That's a junior ADU. You know, I think on acre, two acre larger lots, 1,200 feet is not unreasonable. On smaller lots, I think it's far too small.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. Back to council discussion.
Yeah, just following up on the comment, the R-144 and the R-120, a lot of lots are on hilly areas here, so probably even the R-144 for ADU purposes would be looked at as an R-120 and be subject to the same restriction as whatever the R-120 restriction is?
Not necessarily, no. You have a lot of R-144 that is not over 10% slope.
Yeah.
The whole Twin Creeks area, all of that area, they are not sloped. That's all R-144. Some of the hillsides, yeah, they have slopes, average slopes greater than 10%, but they also have larger lots. They're not just limited to an acre. So, I don't think it's fair to assume that all the hillside lots get bumped out of the R-144 down to R-120.
All right.
Not at all.
Okay. And the thought that I had was then if somebody does want to do a 1,200 square foot, they would have to come back to us for a variance.
No. You cannot grant a variance.
So, you can't grant a variance to anybody?
Increase the square footage to an ADU.
That's not a variance issue?
Yeah, the state law actually says that the permits shall be ministerially processed, notwithstanding any local ordinance related to issuance of conditional use permits or variances. So, basically, you know, my recommendation is to avoid a structure where we require any sort of public hearing requirement for permitting the use.
Okay. Yeah, I would suggest we bump it up to 1,200 at least with the larger lots. That gives people, you know, some living space. And we're talking about larger lots like, you know, a few acres there.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I...
Public comment is closed.
Councilmember Labouvet.
That'll be the first time.
Okay, all right. Well, then do we have a motion to approve the ordinance alterations with the additional alteration of bumping R-144 back up to 1,200?
Removed.
Five seconds. Councilmember Turner.
So, what are we supposed to do here?
Were we just amending the ordinance? Yeah, amending the ordinance with that change, I guess.
Are we waiting to vote? Yes. I'll vote same. This is Form 1. Councilmember Labouvet votes no. Okay. Moving on to new business. Item number eight, consider proposal related to municipal code updates to promote good neighbor site and architecture development transparency in a presentation by council members Labouvet and Turner.
Okay, we get back into it again. Unfortunately, my slides aren't as good as what the previous slide deck had. We'll have to bear with it. So, I've been working on this and/or Councilmember Turner and I have been working on these initiatives for quite a while based on some resident feedback. And so we put forward a set of initiatives for the city to go implement and drafted it in the form of a resolution. And so, do you want to display this, Mr. Lenardis, or are you going to display the slide deck as we go or do you just want me to speak to it?
See if we can get this done.
Well, I'll just start talking. So, the motivation was, you know, essentially just what we just were speaking about. State law is aggressively promoting housing density and quotas contrary to Monteserino values. So, if we just take some recent examples of ADUs and junior ADUs with AB 68 and AB 181 and SB 13 and AB 670 and AB 587, there's a plethora of state laws coming down. You know, these allow three residential units, so they call them now triplexes per lot, attached or detached, as Jeanne just clarified. Requires 60-day approval without city hearing or discretionary review. Cannot require minimum lot size, floor area, or other local restrictions. Four-foot side and rear yard setbacks, quite, quite close. No replacement or additional parking required even when the garage is covered. Cannot require owner to live at the property for a detached unit. Home or association must allow construction. Can be sold or conveyed separate from primary residence if it's built by a nonprofit. Then they, you know, just recently passed also SB 330. Primary application process freezes local ordinance changes. Requires cities to slash permit processing time to 60 to 90 days. Subject to deemed complete approval. Caps number of hearings to five. Restrictions changing land use or zoning to a less intensive use. Housing Accountability Act, so these are just additional modifications. So, state just continues to tweak these laws to make them tougher and tougher year after year. So, cannot be denied or reduced in density if objective standards are not met or are met, subjected to deemed consistent approval. And then also SB 35, minister approval if regional housing requirements are not met. Defines objective standard as no personal subjective judgment. So, this is one to watch because, you know, this is defined with the scope of SB 35, but what we've seen is that there's usually these test balloons that go out and then the scope gets expanded later in time. So, the second really motivating factor here is that there's high real estate, high real estate values incentivize housing density contrary to Monteserino values. And so in Monteserino, rural and scenic residential character makes a desirable place to live and sustains a high real estate value. Monteserino is an aging community. As properties transfer to remote heirs, they're often sold to developers. Monteserino lots are generally large and can accommodate multiple large structures, including those promoted by state law. High real estate values, $1,000 per square foot incentivize maximizing square footage and density. And this negatively impacts rural and scenic residential character and negatively impacts neighboring quality of life and property values. There you go. So, we're on slide four.
Three, four.
Which is the objective. So, what do we want to try to accomplish? We want to try to preserve Monteserino's rural and scenic residential character. So, the state law is limiting the city's ability to oversee and regulate more and more. High real estate values create these conflicting incentives. So, this really necessitates that residents and developers and the city collaborate together to mutually agree to respect Monteserino's guiding principles. So, you know, in the past where the city was able to oversee and regulate, you know, we could keep lit on this, but the state is doing a good job of undoing some of our oversight and, you know, coupled with the high housing values, there's a square foot incentive to just max lots out. So, we want to encourage residents and developers to discuss development projects as impacted by neighbors, with impacted neighbors, just as Councilmember Luthold was suggesting, hey, you should go talk to your neighbors and try to mutually decide what is best for the community, including required approval developments. So, that includes sort of ADUs. We would encourage, if you're going to put up an ADU, that you would be a good neighbor and talk to your neighbor about it and agree on the placement in advance, since the city really has no say over that. So, you just have to be a good neighbor across the fence. We want to encourage transparency and fairness and we want to develop and enforce provisions that counterbalance the state law to the extent that we're able. Next slide. So, this is really a summary of the resolution that we wrote. The first bullet is really around strengthening and enforcing existing Monteserino standards. So, you know, we already have in place findings that must be made along the lines of compatible character and visual impact and consistent with city guidelines, minimum grading and retention of natural contours, retention of trees and solar access, landscaping emphasizes use of natural materials. This is, there's nothing new here. This is, we already have this. A new one is that we would like to try to add some places in our municipal code where we can counterbalance state laws permitted. So, for example, require timely submission of development application deliverables. So, just as the state is requiring that the city have quite strict performance standards, we want to turn the tables also and say, okay, well, if that's good for us, then it's also good for you. So, you can't just linger with your applications indefinitely, that there need to be cutoff times. And if you don't make those cutoff times, you have to start over. So, we do have in place an SB 2 grant ad hoc committee and the proposal is for, and I'm a member of that and Councilmember Luthold is a member of that. And so the proposal is to work with the city manager to strengthen our objective standards and develop targeted areas enforcement. Last slide. So, some of the other elements is really around developing a site and architecture development process document to inform and guide residents. And so this really came from sort of resident comments and feedback where somebody puts up story polls next to their house. They really don't know what the next step is. And so, you know, I think as a city, we should help our residents. You know, we do a lot of handholding with developers, but not so much with the residents. We want to notify the residents of a development application filing. So, you know, a lot of times that the neighbors are the last to know. We want to post development application deliverables, correspondence, and project status to a publicly accessible website. This makes it also more transparent and allows for, you know, neighbors to know what's going on and keep informed without having to come down to the city pretty much every week. We want to notify applicants weekly about pending deliverables. So, if you want to actually try to enforce performance standards on the applicant, the state law says that you actually have to inform them of what they're missing. And so by poking them weekly about what they're missing, it allows you to enforce some overall deliverable standards. We want to raise story polls 30 days prior to a public hearing notice. We want to, just as Mr. Luthold pointed out, it is quite good to be able to see what people are proposing to build. We want to show height, expanse, and adaptation to the terrain. We want to even include concurrent structures that may not be subject to approval. We would like to include subdivisions and planned developments in, for story polls. Again, it's just all along the lines of transparency. And lastly, we'd like to have a customer service orientation element built in where we solicit feedback after a project approval so that we know how we're doing and solicit feedback after project completion so that also, you know, did we say what we're going to do and do what we say? And lastly, there also exists a customer orientation operational excellence ad hoc committee which can help the city manager to develop these templates and standards. And lastly, and this wasn't really my brainchild, so I'm going to let Councilmember Turner speak to this last one.
Site and Architecture Commission?
Yes, please.
Yes. So, for the last slide here, I wanted, for the last point here, I wanted Site and Architecture to provide us with policy improvement and feedback to city council. And I think, you know, as we move on and as we collaborate more with Site and Architecture, I think it would be important, and you're also building, you're also improving our website. You have building permits online, so you should be able to do most of these things online now.
Yes, we'll be having a meeting about that tomorrow. Answer that question live.
So, that's the end of the presentation. So, if there's any questions or we want to move into a discussion phase or a public comment phase?
Are there any council questions before we go to public comment? All right, I'll open public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Jeans?
I think this is excellent. There are a couple of things that I really like. I like the post, pre and post feedback issue, which has never really taken place in the past. I like the idea that when a project is completed, you can actually get feedback. You can invite, for example, the Site and Architecture people out to come out and see how the project turned out. I think that is exceptionally a great idea. As to the story polls, 30 days, I am in favor of that, but I would like it to be implemented in such a way that you can put the story polls up early so that you don't have to wait for the approval date from planning to say, okay, you can now put your story polls up. I'd like to be able to say, I've done this, my story polls are up, please start the clock ticking, here are photographs of the story polls, I've talked to the neighbors. I don't want to have a delay on the public hearing portion of it just because of the story polls. So, I think they should be up for 30 days. I think that's great. But when it's implemented, if you put...
Yeah, currently, the submittal date and hearing date, that's 30 days. So, sometimes they're going to be put in this, the story polls will go up maybe the day they submit. So, that's a little awkwardness. So, there may be story polls up, you know, in, so it's a timing thing. I don't authorize story polls to go up. They go up regardless.
No, you have to have them up on a certain day or...
Yeah, by policy. So, we would just be changing the policy, but that change now puts them on the current timeline that, because currently you submit like February 3rd and you're going to hearing on March 4th. That's like 31 days. So, your story polls have to be up a day after you submit your application with this.
Well, by your saying the day you submit, normally had a dialogue with planning for quite a while.
Yeah, generally, yeah.
You're pretty well, you know, you're tweaking a few...
Because otherwise, I couldn't meet a 30-day turnaround. No other city does that.
So, I would just like the ability to put the story polls up early and have it count towards those 30 days.
You mean more, more than 30 days?
No. I don't want the 30-day limit to be something that delays a public hearing. So, if I put it up two weeks before the, you know, the application is approved to go to hearing and it's, you know, in less than 30 days or whenever it might be, I just don't want that to be the deadline. Should it, you know, should I put it up early, talk to the neighbors? Because I would like to talk to the neighbors when I got story polls.
All right. Yeah, so...
That gives me something to talk about.
I guess I don't approve something to go to hearing. If it's submitted on the deadline, it's going to hearing. I don't have a choice and up to the, so...
But you would, you would not be able to submit it if the story polls are not up unless 30 days.
That's why I'm saying the current timeline...
I hold the 30-day requirement as opposed to it being less than 30 days.
So, maybe, let me ask you the question. Would it, is it, maybe I put in a week, bumped the submittal date a week ahead? Like, so, because right now, the turnaround time is literally a month. So, if...
Maybe part of your submission is you've got story polls up and you photographed them and that's part of the submission.
Yeah, so that, and that works, the 30 days.
That would be a solution to it.
Yeah.
Then you know there are.
Because what I'm saying, yeah.
You know you've got your 30 days and you're not chasing...
You don't need to wait for us. It just, it just happens.
I'm just trying not to delay it.
Yeah.
While still giving the neighbors 30 days to look at it.
Right. And that, and that, and that...
Anyway, I'm really in favor of the whole thing. I think it's a great addition.
That is, that is the idea was... That is, that is the idea was, was to provide 30 days notice. You know, the feedback that I've received from quite a few residents was that the first time they became aware of a development project was when the story polls came up, and that was usually a few days before they got a public hearing notice. So that's only 10 days out, and that's not enough time for people to digest what's going on. And so that, that's what, and furthermore, and just to clarify, this is directive. So we're asking, the council is creating a resolution, which is directive to the city staff to then go off and try to implement these things. So then, you know, I think there's going to be also, these things will have to come back in the form of, you know, well, more, more thought out processes and so forth and to implement in the code, and so they'll come back and they'll be voted on as a second step, so.
Anyway, may I say something too? I think this is not, this is not the end-all. This is just the start of, you know, our good neighbor site and.
I really like the encouragement of homeowners and developers to talk to neighbors, and they should talk to them before they started doing that heavy design. They should come up with some rough ideas, then go talk to the neighbors, find out what's going on, see what their impact is going to be before they spend the money doing something that's going to screw everyone.
Yes, and I think one of the things we're looking for here is really best practices and best known methods for actually doing, for developing, you know.
Well, well done, great stuff.
All right, thank you. All right, council discussion, any further discussion?
I think there's more.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more, I'm sorry. Council recognizes Brian Mekachuk.
It's a blank form. We just have him made up with your name on him.
One of the things that I'd like to put, look into the future a little bit in terms of technology is a lot of architects and designers are using 3D software. And what you see with 3D software is pretty amazing because you can, now with technology, you can show the landscape so that you could actually visually see the building on the site. You can create a runtime version with this software like ArchiCAD so that you could submit things like that to site and architecture, whatever. Right now, all the site and architecture gets are, you know, printed PDFs, you know, that are single dimensioned without the ability to turn around and look, I want to see from this window what it looks like. I want to see from the ground what it looks like, what that mass and structure it really is. When I worked on my house years ago, we used a 3D software. I could go through every room in the house, I could see it, I could, you know, what is it going to be at a different time of day? What's the light going to be like? So anyways, I just, we'd like to see it evolve, the future does not be limited. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Council recognizes Rupa Shika.
I really love the emphasis on the transparency here, and I like the chance, you know, making sure the neighbors, or a plan is put over, and the story post story is so true because when my situation came up, I got to know that only after the story poll went up. The only additional thing that I would ask in terms of the transparency is that the report that we got, the staff report, was good, but it was very confusing and convoluted, not able to understand what the scope, calculations, et cetera. It would be good for the report to be able to be understood by a layman person. I'm not from the planning department, I don't have any knowledge, so I've been chasing this since September, so can I transfer that layman's opinion to understand? Great start, as you all said, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, council discussion.
Yeah, I appreciate your good neighbor input on it. I'd like to see probably an emphasis on clean energy also where a developer is advised of Montessorino's adoption of the encouragement to build gas-free, install gas-free appliances as much as possible and bring that to their attention at the time that there's a many plans. Now, we've not banned gas, but we've had a, we're encouraging people to use all electric appliances. Add that to, I think, the page five guidelines where you've got bullet points of five or six items. I'd like to see if you can add that in.
All right.
So, yeah, thank you. I had a couple of comments. One is, and again, I really appreciate all that's been done on this. I think it's a great start and it moves the process forward, which is something that had not been happening. So this is wonderful. I also, I think I'm interpreting this correctly, that this is the beginning of a process. So actually, one specific comment before I come back and finish on that. On item three, it talked about 1,000 square feet, sorry, 1,000-foot distance to notify within 10 days of filing. I wonder if we can explore, or should explore, putting the cost of that additional notification. Is that something, and I don't know how much it is, whether we can put that on the developer or the applicant regarding some of the costs of notice?
You can, yeah. Many cities pass the cost of public noticing onto the applicant, which was homeowner, applicant, whoever you want to call it, developer. But yeah, we would have to amend our fee schedule to include that.
Right, and so one would be the cost, and then the second, I'm also concerned about our staff and overhead here. The other question that we might look into whether we can do, could we provide the mailing list and make the developer provide the notice, take care of the actual mailing and file a certificate of mailing? Or do we have to do that? Again, this is not a question we need to answer.
My experience, if we want to ensure that the public has noticed, we do that. I've worked in both systems, and quite honestly, it's easy enough with, you know, the technology. We run a list, we create the labels, we slap them on, and we're confident that it gets out. If you give it to the others, you then have to, you know, look at their notice, you have to, yeah. I think this, the whole intent of this would support the mailing coming out of City Hall.
So maybe, maybe just the cost. So I guess the, the other thing is, I mean, I was thinking that this would really be phase one. The, we haven't reached out to the populace yet. We've got an ad hoc committee, we couldn't even talk about it amongst ourselves until we're here in the open meeting. So I think that I would love to see, and we can bring this maybe into our planning for what we're going to be doing this spring, having maybe some neighborhood town halls to solicit input from the neighbors who've experienced developments in various forms, because they may have some additional items for good neighbor that could really take this.
Excellent.
Additional places, so. But I don't want to say, let's delay and do that first. Let's get this on the record.
All right then, any other comments? Otherwise, do we, do we have a motion to approve?
Beat me to it. You do have a second. I second.
Yes, we have a motion by Councilmember Turner and a second by Councilmember LaBové. You should be able to vote. Okay, all votes are in, and the motion passes 5-0. All right, next item, item number nine, proposed provisions to regulations and guidelines for conduct of public meetings. Mr. Leonardis, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lawler and council. For your consideration this evening, our proposed revisions to the 1691.6, more commonly known as regulations and guidelines for the conduct of public meetings. One of the tasks derived from council's strategic goal-setting session last March was to make council meetings more efficient. And in an effort to do so, staff reviewed the 1691 guidelines and has some recommended suggestions. First, there were some policy language items which needed updated, updating primarily due to the section on meeting recordings. So there was just outdated language there. Next, the city clerk and I worked on some timelines for written public communications and presentations to be delivered to the, to the council at their meetings, deadlines and such, that would make it easier for staff to, to get those communications as part of our, our meeting materials. Last, there are proposed changes to the language regarding meeting decorum, which helps to ensure members of the public have equitable access to participate in the public hearing. This concludes my report, and I'm open for questions.
Any council member questions? I don't think we have anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item, so do we have a motion to approve? Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Luthold and a second by Councilmember Turner. You should be able to vote. All votes are in, and it passes 5-0. Moving on, committee and commission reports. Do any council members have anything they wish to report?
I do. Nope.
Do you?
I do.
Mayor Protempore.
Thank you. The, I attended the library commission for the Joint Powers Library and wanted to bring forward, if you haven't had a chance to see the document that they sent out to us, I believe that city manager has also circulated this to everyone. If not, I can take care of doing that. One of the most important things at the last meeting was honoring Nancy Howe, who was the county librarian. Several of our local cities in the Joint Powers District have actually had proclamations honoring her. I didn't bring one forward to our council simply because we don't have a library, but as a member, I certainly want to recognize her. She is retiring after 25 years with the library district, eight years as head librarian. But Nancy Howe's story is very interesting. 25 years ago, she entered into the library system in Santa Clara County as a library page and advanced to head librarian, handling the $50 million budget for the Joint Powers Library Association. And really a wonderful person who has led the library. Most recently, as they pointed out, they have done their satisfaction survey professionally processed. They have a 97% satisfaction rate for friendliness of staff, friendliness and welcoming of staff, and an 85% overall satisfaction would recommend, highly recommend the library to friends and family. So the library is doing wonderfully. They are running a great surplus, they are expanding hours, just a real benefit to the community. And I did want to recognize Nancy Howe for her service here as she hires my report.
All right, thank you. Any other council members? No comments?
I have a comment.
All right.
I received a couple of letters from the citizens. One of them is Phil Levine on the Financial Transparency Center that staff did, and they're very happy with the results, and I just wanted to share that with you, Mr. Leonardis.
Thank you.
Were you listening?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, city managers report.
Thank you, mayor. So I have a brief comments this evening. The city of Montessorino just launched our new website on February 3rd, located at the cityofmontessorino.org, as the Mayor Protem just mentioned. In our news section, we announced the librarian Nancy Howe retiring. We put the full article up on the website, and that's what we're able to do, which is very nice, as well as some information that came today about the coronavirus. So we're very current, we try to get everything out there we can. I wanted to mention that it has a transparency center, as Councilmember Turner just mentioned. I put up, or this was staff, combined efforts, we put up some graphs about our pavement quality, links to schools, unfunded pensions. So we're getting as much stuff that we can put out there in graphical format as possible. So we will continue that. And we also recently added a history link, which we will be adding to in the future as well, so. And it is ADA compliant. One last thing that we posted to the web on the news section, I wanted to bring this to the public's attention this evening. We're having a Neighborhood Watch meeting on February 13th here in the council chambers. That will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and everyone is invited. It will be hosted by the Los Catos Montessorino Police. So come join the discussion. And that's with my comments.
Stop the bleed.
Thank you.
No? We also have a CERT training. It's called Stop the Bleed. It's to help, it is for, for people to go, it's free, it's 90 minutes, and if somebody's bleeding, you can actually save their lives.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, that was posted on Nextdoor today, and we will be posting that to the web as well. Our webmaster went home sick today, so, before we got that out.
All right, moving on to future agenda, oh, I'm sorry.
Appreciate the welcome letter you drafted for the new citizens. A couple of suggestions on adding a link. Good training link would also be a good one, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Elahay. And the bag that we distribute to the new residents of Montessorino has extensive information about CERT, about the Fire Safety Alert SCC, and I could include those links on that letter from the mayor, which is the welcome letter, but that was a general letter, kind of just a greeting. And as they get into the packet, there is more extensive information on those subjects, including the Neighborhood Watch as well. But what I thought about doing is posting all the fire and safety information to our website and have a separate button that is like a public safety button, so the community can access all those items that would be in that bag and all the contact information and Alert SCC and all those things right from our website. So we'll be working on that in the near future.
I, for me?
Yes, of course.
I had a thought about that, which is, I think the new residence bag is wonderful for the new residents, and they get a huge download of information and can go over that, and that's wonderful. The city website's got all sorts of resources, but of course, no one uses them until something goes wrong and they finally go and look for something, and in fact, they find that it's been there all along usually, whether it's getting to the design guidelines or resident information, whether it's information about libraries, whatever it is. So I was going to suggest that we might want to start a concerted effort of maybe once a week, like they've got the Nextdoor with the plant of the week. We should have an informational piece of the week perhaps from the city on a specific item. Take one of those pieces that the rest of the citizens have forgotten about, that's maybe a piece of the welcome bag or the link to the current news on the website, and put that out there from the city. But of course, no one reads those because they quickly fall to the bottom. So I was going to suggest that we coordinate with the council members and that if council members want, you maybe take turns to push an item, maybe one of these, so that the city does it and the council member pushes, and so that we just constantly roll through these 20 or 30 or 40 pieces of information that our citizens should be paying attention to and get them out there. The Neighborhood Watch is the obvious one right now. It's coming up on February 13th. You've put it out there, we can get it out again. But I think one of us should take responsibility for trying to stir some discussion up and really generate some attention on social media for that. Question?
Okay. Any, moving on to future agenda items? All right. Then, the meeting is adjourned at 9:54. Next meeting is February 18th? Yes, all right.